Recording in progress.
This is because we haven't had the person.
They can't see anything.
I can't really zoom.
You have the zoom on?
Zoom is on. MCTV is on.
Okay. The MCTV is not on?
Yeah, especially because new people elected and people.
Yeah, because multiple families.
It's the same five just reorganizing.
Apparently, the city is not ordering the old ones anymore.
Oh.
I don't know. I just was trying to find them for the new council elect members. And I have this little stock for.
Alice? Alice Quang?
Alice Quang? Quang? Is Alice Quang here?
Eduardo? How are you feeling?
Thank you, everybody. We're just waiting on our city manager. And we'll get MCTV to put everything in place, and we'll start this meeting. Okay, MCTV, whenever you're ready, and Eduardo will give us the cue. Perfect. Let's call this meeting to order on December 13th, 2022. Can we please call for roll call?
Councilmember Schneider?
Present.
Councilmember Holliver?
Present.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Here.
Mayor Leva?
Here.
All members of the city council are present.
Thank you. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Supervisor Pine, would you like to lead us in that pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, we have one ceremonial presentation, and that's a condemnation for the young student volunteers. So could we please get Isabella Chan, Avon Chen, Anderson Fung, Adrian Fung, Jackie Ning, and Jacob Wang? Thank you, Vice Mayor. So Vice Mayor is handing out these for the young student volunteers that gave their valuable time to teach senior citizens cellphone and computer technology. And boy, do I know that is a task. Thank you all for your volunteering and your time and your dedication to Millbrae. Can we get a round of applause for our future Millbrae leaders? We get a photo? Right on. Thank you all. I have one question for the group. Did anybody learn to FaceTime?
We're working on it.
Good answer. Great answer. Thank you very, very much. So next, we're going to move to public communication. And public communication is for anything that is not on our agenda tonight. And I have a speaker, our first speaker, Alice Quang. Is Alice here? There she is. So anything that is not on the agenda tonight, we'll give you three minutes.
Hi, good evening, all. I'm surprised I will be the first speaker. But anyway, first of all, and thank you for all, our councilmember, mayor, and vice mayor, for the hardworking and tried the best effort to serve Millbury City in the past, in this year, 2022. And second, welcome, new councilmember on the board, and best wish for the new coming year too. This year is a tough year, especially for our Millbury's new elections. We learned, and democracy allow us to have a choices. But I'm on T4. I live in Clearfield. So this year, initially, we only have one candidate. And secondly, we have a write-in, so we learned. And Mr. Goodman, sorry, I didn't vote for you this time, but I still best wish to you because we are in the same community. And I hope you gave our vote and all of us to vote you in the future. Best wish for you, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Our next speaker would be Wayne Lee. Wayne Lee? All right, let's go to Mike. There he is.
Evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, Wayne Lee. I just, as a former candidate, I just want to congratulate the new councilmembers. And I'm looking forward to say, go talk to your councilmember. So I think that the new councilmembers are going to do fine, and they're good people. And I know that Maurice, I worked with him for anti-racism and diversity and fairness. Thank you, Maurice, for all the work you do. And also, I just wanted to thank my colleagues, Ruben Holliver and Anna Leva. You know, we fought a lot, but at the end, we were very good friends. We went out and just drank a beer. We just brushed it off. And we went again into the cage match again the next week. But at the end, we respected each other. And I think that in my advice to the new councilmembers, that you'll find that you can respect your new councilmembers, and they respect you. And just keep in mind that it's only politics, and we're all here for our city of Millbrae. So I just wanted to, also, wanted to give you this because this is a timer, two-minute timer. All right? If it's not, if you can't say in two minutes, that means you have to rethink it. All right? Because nobody wants, everybody wants to hear what you have to say, but nobody wants to hear you talk. Anyway, congratulations to everybody. I'm going to miss my colleagues, but I know they're going to still stay involved. And congratulations to the new mayor and the new vice mayor coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. We have one more speaker slip from Michael Kelly.
Good evening, esteemed council, and wow, what a turnout, citizens of Millbrae. My name is Michael Kelly. I moved to Millbrae in 1993. Very proud resident. We're raising our family here. Loved what Wayne Lee had to say. I'm up here to share three things. What an amazing election cycle, but there's some more voting coming up, like in a few weeks. For any registered Democrat, they're voting for the delegates, for the district delegates for the Democratic Party for the state. You have to request a ballot if you want one. So you can go to ADEM's. It's a website you can find if you want to vote. And these people, these delegates, determine which candidates are going to be endorsed in future. So anyone that didn't know, now you know. The other information, as Wayne mentioned, this respect amongst the councilmembers and everyone that's worked together. I worked on Maurice's campaign. I worked on Angie's campaign. I'm very proud that Wayne and I stayed very good friends. Wayne married my wife, Amy, and I, when we moved to Millbrae. And we go to lunch frequently, and I have a very high regard for him. And yes, tough-fought campaign, somebody had to win. But we're really optimistic about what the future holds for Millbrae. It's an incredibly bright future. The other last item is with regard to the Social Equity Commission. I received some news. You may have heard me speak last session about that, that it's been a long time looking for some progress. But I did hear that the subcommittee was ready to present tonight. And unfortunately, there wasn't room for it on the agenda. It got pulled back off. That's disappointing, but that's okay. I understand. But I'm so appreciative that some work, some progress was made. It does my heart good. I think the intent of everyone here is well-placed, and I appreciate that. I'm proud to raise my family in Millbrae. I'm proud of the people I know in Millbrae. And I realize we can't talk about items on the agenda, but for our outgoing mayor and our outgoing councilmember, Ruben Holliver and Anna Leva, thank you for your years of service. I know there's going to be a ceremony, so I don't want to break protocol. But I appreciate the opportunity to share. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Michael. And I just want to let everybody know, we do have three more public comments via Zoom. Eduardo, can you help out here?
Yes, absolutely. Alexis Lewis? Alexis?
Hi, good evening. I'm trying to do two meetings at one time, so forgive me for being a little disembobulated. I wanted to congratulate everyone on the council, all the new members. I personally only know one, and the reason I'm here is to give my congratulations to Councilman Goodman. The San Mateo NAACP is proud of you, and I'm proud of you. And we want you to know that you have our full support. It takes a lot to do public service. You get beat up. You have very little praise, but most of the time, you're getting beat up. So to all of you that are strong enough and willing to be a public service and work for your cities and your communities, I commend you. And I thank you for giving me this little time to congratulate Councilman Goodman. And I want to wish all of you happy holidays and best wishes for a healthy and happy new year to you and your families. Good night.
Thank you.
Robin Pierce? Robin, are you there?
Hi, hi. Actually, this is Nina Phillips here. I'm joining you from, as a representative of Hip Housing, which is a local affordable housing nonprofit operating throughout San Mateo County. We've been here for 50 years now and continue to invest in human potential by improving the housing and lives of people in our community. On behalf of Hip Housing, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the members of the city of Millbrae for your continued support of our organization and affordable housing solutions. As a symbol of our appreciation of your continued partnership, I'd like to present the council with Hip Housing's 2023 calendar. I believe you all received it. We dropped them off late last week. This calendar features art from 12 young artists living in the county selected from a pool of 250 entries. Every month corresponds with a drawing of home and a quote that answers the question, "What does home mean to you?" We are so proud to work throughout San Mateo County and in Millbrae to create affordable housing solutions for low-income individuals and families. Each year, we house over 1,200 people, thanks to our strong partnerships with local governments. In the city of Millbrae, there are currently eight people living in one of our affordable housing matches, affordable sharing home matches. We also house two families through our self-sufficiency program. As you know, the cities and towns within San Mateo County are very interconnected. Our clients may live in one city and work in another. They move between cities depending on housing availability and family, or commute into the county for work. So a lot of these different facts are listed in our calendar this year and showcase that we provide and house homes for over 3,280 individuals. I'd like to take a little moment now just to showcase one of my most favorite entries of this year. Our August entry, it was done by a fifth grader in Foster City, so not too far from here. Her name's Lillian, and she writes, "Home is a place that unites people of all different races, genders, and ages. Home ensures peace and equality to all beings. Home is everyone's shed, Earth is everyone's shared home." So kind of a different take on it, on what home means, but I love that one. I hope that this calendar resonates with you also and spurs you to consider the importance of a safe and stable home, especially within a region that is so defined by housing challenges. I ask that you spread the word of our programs so we can support individuals and families within our community. Please feel free to reach out to me. Again, my name is Nina Phillips. And you can also visit the Hip Housing website to look at any of our affordable housing programs. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I miss those calendars on the dais. Remember when we used to get them on the dais? Yeah.
Okay, Joe, can you please state your last name for, or your full name for the record, please, Joe?
Hi, my name is Joe Chan. We have been living in Millbrae for more than 120 years. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Oliver and Councilmember Holliver for their efforts in protecting private property rights, ensuring high-quality public safety services, and most importantly, supporting the banning of marijuana sales in Millbrae. Secondly, I would like to congratulate the newly-elected councilmember Maurice Goodman and Dolina Callahan, wishing them success in serving the city council. Finally, I would hope the city council protocol will be followed in selecting the new mayor and vice mayor. A common yes.
Mayor, just sign him as on the agenda.
Joe, your comments were like, I want to say thank you very much, but we have to, if any comments come, a public comment with things on the agenda, I have to ask you to stop.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have anything else? One more.
We do have one more. Alexander Melendez? Alexander? Alexander Melendez, are you there? Alexander Melendez? You need to click the button to be allowed to speak.
So with all due respect, with a full council, a full room right now, Alexander could be invited to the next council meeting for whatever wasn't on the agenda tonight to be discussed at the next meeting. Is that okay with? Everybody here? Okay. So I'm going to move to the consent calendar, and we have five items on the consent calendar. We have item number two, the adoption of the resolution finding that the proclaimed state of emergency continues to impact the ability to meet safety in person and declaring that the city council and city commissions and committees will continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. We have item number three, to waive the second reading and enact the 2022 state model building codes with local amendments, including local reach code, expedite solar permitting, and expedite electric vehicle charging permit. And we have item number four, the Millbrae 2040 general plan. One, approval council directed additional policies to the Millbrae 2040 general plan update. And two, waive the second reading and adopt and ordinance amending Chapter 10.05 zoning of Title 10 planning and zoning to implement the new DT and ECR specific plan. And item number five, a resolution clarifying the results of the November 8th, 2022 general municipal election. Move approval? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have any discussion? Perfect. Can we call for the vote?
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Aye.
Mayor Leva?
Aye.
The consent calendar is passed unanimously.
Perfect. Well, we'll move to item number six, which is the reorganization of the city council. And when I, before I go to anything, I'd like to acknowledge there are several dignities in our audience tonight. Is Sarah Torio here? Sarah from Congressman Jackie Spears' office? Welcome. Saul Miranda from the District Representative of the State of Josh Becker, Senator Josh Becker. I think they were running a little bit late on that one. Dave Pine. San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Lena Silverman from San Mateo County Office of Supervisor Don Horsley. Christina Corpus, our chief and our San Mateo County Sheriff-elect. Bruce Barron, Central Fire, Central County Fire Department Fire Chief. Dan Quigg, did Dan make it?
He's on Zoom.
Oh, good. Dan, former mayor and Parks and Recreation Commissioner Chair. Marge Colopietro, former mayor. I saw Marge. Janet Fogarty, former mayor. Robert Gachak, is Robert here? Zoom. Okay. Gina Fogarty, former mayor. Luis Vella, Council of Malta. I saw Michael Brownrigg come in from the city of Burlingame. Welcome, Michael. And we have a special rep from the newly-elected Assemblyperson Diane Pappin. We have her daughter Alexa Pappin. All right. Thank you all for coming. I have some comments from the outgoing mayor. I have to tell you guys, it's, it was way easier to accept and be in the seat to say, oh, I won. I'm so excited. Because I don't know how excited I am about saying goodbye. But I'm going to stick to the script here. And I want to start by first saying all my thank yous because that is the most important message I want to leave for tonight. I'm very grateful to all of the voters of Millbrae. I have two terms in government here in Millbrae. And, okay, get it. I want to thank our great staff. We are led by our most competent city manager, Tom Williams. Tom, it's been a pleasure working with you. You run a first-class team here at Millbrae, and I'll miss everyday interactions. Although, with you and many others of the staff, I've become very friendly, and I know my friendship will continue. I want to thank our legal team. Joan, working with you, I feel as if I've gone to law school. Of course, you being the teacher. But after eight years, I could have earned that degree. I've enjoyed working with you, and I really hope that we can continue to see each other. I want to thank you to my colleagues up here. Vice Mayor Pappin, you are a force. I treasure your friendship, and I have so many members with you about the fun times and great accomplishments we've had serving with each other. Ruben, I truly enjoyed the time we've been councilmembers together. It's been a privilege not only to grow together on our journey, but also to witness the growth in your life. Your marriage to Amy was a great time, and of course, congratulations to your firstborn Nolan. Anne, I thank you for your passion to Millbrae. I really appreciate your hard work and your dedication to ensure important environmental policies get put into place, even at the local level. Your fight is not easy. Anders, my friend, I'm so happy you decided to run for council. I supported that idea, and I'm very proud I did. You're a fantastic representative to our beautiful city. And I'm very fortunate to say that I'll see you in our SAL group. Sheriff's Activity League is not letting you go now that you showed off your Santa Claus skills. I remember calling you from New York and asking if you'd play Santa for the gift-giving night. And you said, you didn't hesitate. You said yes. I love that. I'm honored to be your friend and even also a friend of your wife, Margaret. Thank you to the past councilmembers, most of whom have become great friends. Marge, Robert, Dan, Wayne, Janet, and I knew I shouldn't start at saying names because I know I'll forget one. I want to say thank you to my family. They have been very supportive, not always happy with the significant time investment that I've made to the city, but they're very understanding. And there's a similar sentiment to my office. But I just want to caution them, they better be careful of what they wished for because I'm going to be back full-time with a lot of extra time. And I cannot forget our senior advisory. And I cannot forget our senior advisory committee. Thank you, thank you, thank you. What a powerful giving group in Millbrae. I want to thank MCTV for their continued efforts to assist in keeping our community connected and informed. And I, of course, want to thank the voters of Millbrae. I thank you so much for giving me this position and allowing it for me two times. Now, you know, it all started about 11 years ago. I had barely lost an election to a former mayor, Robert Gotchak. The great Robert Gotchak. But a vacancy came about on the council when a former mayor, Nadia Holberger, Holliver, excuse me, passed away. Ruben and I both put our names forward for an appointment to the city council, and we shared a similar circumstance. Both of us had just lost a parent. Both of us had parents who had served their cities, and we both felt the calling to serve. Knowing the Holliver name, that did and still does come with great respect, Ruben would win the next election. The fact is, we both won the election, and we've served together and worked together for Millbrae the last nine years. During the last nine years, the city has accomplished a great deal. So, hold on. My good friend Denise Baker and I took a ride around Millbrae last week to look at the new developments and to reminisce over the last nine years. As we drove our city, I showed her the biotech developments going up. I pointed out the approved projects that just haven't quite begun. In the last year, we've made significant progress in Millbrae Station, which will be the home to 850,000-square-foot life science campus developed by the Alexandria and the Longfellow Development Companies. Iken Therapeutics, who leased 285,000 square feet of life science campus from Alexandria, will be Millbrae's first corporate headquarters. The new campus will bring more than 3,000 jobs to the city once completed. Millbrae's air station project also nearing completion. The project includes a mixed use of transit-oriented developments, including a mix of 300 residential spaces, 15,000-square-foot office and retail space, 165,000-square-foot hotel, and a public parking use on 3.53 acres in Millbrae adjacent to the Millbrae Transit Station. The Gateway at Millbrae Project, adjacent to the BART station, will also nearing completion, will include 164-room residence-in hotel, affordable housing, 320-unit apartments, and an abundant of space for new businesses. We're excited that this landmark project for the city is very close to completion, and look forward to welcoming new residents and businesses to our city. Next to my friend Denise Baker's local small business, Rob Baker Olympic Station, we visited the potential sites of the upcoming roundabout and the approved Office Depot development. We went south on El Camino and checked out the exercise park and the skate park, both completed within the last year. The skate park was completely renovated with steel framing and geofome this past year. The new skate park reopened earlier this summer and has a wonderful addition to our community, promoting the importance of outdoor activities for all ages. The recreation center, nearly seven years ago, we had a devastating, devastating fire. Thank you, Tom Williams, for having the courage and the tenacity to push forward and get it completed. We ended up saving money after COVID hit. It would have been so much more in construction cost, and we have not, we would not have done that without timely decisions. We could not have accomplished this momentum success for our community without significant funding provided by the state of California with the assistance of Assembly Pro Tem Kevin Mullins and San Mateo County Measure K Funds with assistance from Dave Pine, our supervisor. Also generous donations from the Peninsula Healthcare District and other community members, who will all be honored on a donor wall. Every aspect of the new recreation center, from the architect, landscape, building materials, and art, strongly ties into Millbrae's rich history and culture. Our mission was to create space for everybody. We're excited to continue driving inclusivity and accessibility through recreational programs, service, and social opportunities hosted here at our recreation center. Adding to the allure, the new recreation center this year, we transformed our Central Park playground into a flagship park for the city of Millbrae. We contracted with Speck, who created an inclusive turnkey playground solution. In partnership with Gates and Associates, Speck designed an 8,000-square-foot state-of-the-art inclusive playground with expansive play sections for both kids 2 to 5 and 5 to 12. It's hard to find time in the day throughout every day not having it filled with families enjoying our new central park. During my term as councilmember, I decided to take my passion for mental health and homelessness to Sacramento. So I ran for the state senate. The race didn't go as planned. So I brought it to Millbrae. I brought the plan. This year, we partnered with Life Moves for a pilot program that provided two social workers who conduct homeless outreach at Millbrae's BART station. To date, Life Moves has successfully placed 126 homeless individuals encountered at the Millbrae BART station in temporary housing and are successfully assisting dozens more. I'm proud to report that the organization well exceeded the goal of placing 20 individuals into temporary housing for the first year of the program. Just today, we received a grant from the supervisors from our county to expand this existing program, and Millbrae will receive an additional $370,572 to continue and enhance this program. Given the tremendous success of this program, I'm hoping that it's not only a model for our state, but for our nation as well. So, what are the fun memories? Well, for me, chili cook-off and fun run, holiday tree lighting with the snow machine, employee appreciation lunches, beats and brews, outdoor movie night, ribbon cutting to the new community center, just a few to mention. What were the greatest lessons? One of the greatest lessons was from Dave Jensen, who was our strat planning leader nearly nine years ago. He taught council a concept that I always try to use. He called it food for thought. F, look at the facts. O, look at your options. O again, look at what the outcomes could be. And D, make a decision. Thank you, Dave Jensen. I've learned to exercise that process in every one of my votes. Number two, transparency in government is critical. Nastiness on next door is not transparency, and it is not acceptable civic behavior. Kindness is a virtue. For those who truly care about their community, reach out to the electives respectfully. Number three, look for the solutions. We are all notified of problems. We know there'll be another problem tomorrow. Talking about a problem is harping on the negative. Solutions are how we get positive results. We don't have problems if we have a solution. So what do I want to see in Millbrae? I want the medians to be landscaped. I want the potholes through the city fixed. I want many more ribbon cuttings, and I want a great 75th anniversary celebration. So tonight, I've spoken on the past, where we've been, the present, where we are now, and what I still wish the future could accomplish in the future. But it's all up to the new council sitting here and out there to take us forward. Gina Anders, Ann, Angelina, and Maurice, I have faith in your leadership. You will do Millbrae well. Always know, I'm a phone call away if I can be helpful. I God bless all of you, and I God bless Millbrae. Thank you. Councilmember Oliver, it's your turn.
Thank you. I was going to talk about some of the accomplishments that we've made over the years, but I think the mayor covered those quite well. I just wanted to thank all of you, first of all, for being here this evening, and for those who are watching at home tonight. This is a very important moment, the peaceful transition of power here in Millbrae, and I'm glad you all are able to join us this evening. It's really been an incredible honor to serve as your councilmember for the past nine years, including two years as mayor. So thank you to the voters of Millbrae for twice entrusting me with this incredible responsibility. Some people I'd like to thank this evening, my wife, Amy, is here. You know, we first, when I was first running for the council, it was actually right when we started dating, and I think she didn't really know what she was getting into at the time, but, you know, she stuck with me through all these years and has really been my rock, my strongest supporter, and the person I lean on through good times and bad. And so I want to thank you for all the sacrifices that you've made over all these years that I've served on the council. My father, Richard, couldn't be here tonight, but he's always been a great encouragement to me and was my landlord for the first few years that I was on the council. So I'd like to thank him for that and for providing, I think, great advice to me over the years. And to my mom as well, who served this community in many capacities for many years, really has always been an inspiration to me and really helped to instill important qualities in me, integrity, hard work, and commitment to this community, and someone who I always look up to. Some other thank yous, all of my colleagues here, Mayor Oliva, you and I, as you mentioned, came up around the same time on the council here. We've had a lot of, I think, wonderful memories together throughout this time, and hard to believe that we're both leaving now. But it's been wonderful serving with you and organizing all of these great events and campaigning together and everything else that's come up over the years. And also the other colleagues staying on board, Vice Mayor Papin, Councilmember Fung, and Councilwoman Schneider for your service to this community as well, and for, I think, being a great working team together. Our city manager, Tom Williams, who I think has done an excellent job. All of our city staff, who I can't name everyone, but we have an excellent working team, and I think Tom has done an excellent job leading that team. Our city attorney, Joan Casman, as mentioned, has been sort of a great guiding light as well to us through, and he's been here, what, about 30 years now, so, plus, so, I think has the most institutional knowledge out of all of us that we can all lean on. And as the mayor mentioned, some of the former councilmembers who I've served with, who've really been mentors to me over the years, Robert Gotchak, Wayne Lee, and Marge Colapietro as well, as well as our former city manager, Marcia Rains, who is here for the first, my first term on council. And then also a special shout-out to the person who drafted me, who recruited me to run, and that is Baron Suwen, who reached out to me when I was 25 years old, didn't have a whole lot of experience, but was pretty familiar with most city issues, and he encouraged me to run shortly after my mother passed away. Took a lot of convincing. It wasn't something that I just jumped into doing, but I'm glad to have his, have had his support at the time, and without him, I wouldn't be here today. You know, the mayor mentioned many of our accomplishments over the years, and I'm not going to rehash all of that, but I think my goal, you know, one of the goals that I had when I ran both times was to preserve Millbrae as, well, to position Millbrae as a modern and competitive city in modern times while maintaining our small-town feel. And I think with all of our actions that we've accomplished over the years, I think we have done that between the development agreements, the developments along the transit corridor, and, but at the same time, maintaining our, the character of our neighborhoods and enhancing our public safety. And I think the general plan that we just approved really does continue that vision going forward. And, you know, I think that's something that we all, you know, all can appreciate and I'm proud to say that we have accomplished. You know, the recreation center, I'll say again, you know, Mayor Oliva was the mayor when the old building was destroyed in the arson fire, and so it was really something that none of us expected to be thrown into, but she was, and she handled it extremely well at the time. But I think really that project, more than anything else, was an example of our community really coming together. We had so many great ideas from the community, and to see that, you know, it took some time, but to be able to put the funding together with the assistance from Assemblymember Mullin and Supervisor Pine and several others, to be able to put the funding together to make that vision a reality is something that I will always be proud of. And then we haven't even mentioned COVID, but when I was mayor the second time was when the COVID pandemic hit, and we had to quickly adapt to the shelter-in-place conditions. We didn't really know what the future held, but, you know, I think we reacted to it pretty, very well, got through the crisis, and I think we have emerged stronger than we were before that crisis. So as I leave the council this evening, I'll always look back fondly at my time in office, and I'll be proud of everything that we accomplished together for the betterment of Millbrae. While I'll miss certain aspects of the job, it will be refreshing to have some more time with my family. And I'll continue to look for ways to stay involved in the community, and I hope to see everyone at events around town in the new year, as the mayor mentioned, the 75th anniversary celebration that we have scheduled in January. So thank you all once again. It has been an honor and a privilege of a lifetime. There's still a lot of work to be done, and I wish our returning and incoming councilmembers, Vice Mayor Papin, Councilmember Fung, Councilmember Schneider, and our two new councilmembers, Lex Callahan and Goodman, all the success in the upcoming years. You know, we all, we all love Millbrae, and this community means so much to all of us. So we're all counting on you, and we trust you, and we all are strongest when we come together as a community to achieve our goals. So thank you all, and have a wonderful holiday season.
Council comments, if you don't mind? Thank you, and I'll take my new toy. I want to thank both Mayor Oliva and Ruben Holliver. And you've heard so many great things that working together, we can achieve and all the goals here. What you don't see are the other committees, the work that's done. Annie is always there on the, she served on the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, which is known as HART, trying to leverage funding to provide more homes for people throughout the county. She is always there, supporting every single event we have. If somebody needs funding for this, that, and the other thing, she is there, and you don't see any of it. It's not there. She has served so well on the Sheriff's Activities League, just being a part of this community because her heart is Millbrae, and she always will be. Your service has been amazing. We don't always agree, which is obvious there, but we are absolutely friends. And even in the times when we really, really disagree, it's still, it's civil and it's friendship. So I thank you very much for all of that and everything you have done for our city. Ruben, you have grown to be an amazing leader here. In your mother's passing, you learned so much from her, I know, and it has shown your growth throughout this entire process. Being the mayor during a pandemic, I mean, the uncertain circumstances, the videos you did. circumstances, the videos you did to help calm our community, they were amazing, and the work that you have done for several years on the Library Joint Authorities Board, I know your heart is really there, our Sister Cities Committees, commute.org, these are the things that our community doesn't see a lot of, but the commitment of our council members and the years you have served here, I've worked very closely with Ruben on the recreation center, we were on the subcommittee dealing through all kinds of little things that put together an amazing recreation center. And so, you have always been a tough negotiator with a soft glove, getting us an extra 20% of the BART development of affordable housing, and I appreciate everything you've done and the fact that you're really bringing up your family here. It's so nice, the best move you ever made was Amy. And you're having your family here, as yours as well, Annie, it's just, it's been so great, and I look forward to working with you both in the future because it is about community, and we are all community. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Sure. Councilmember Schneider.
Many things have already been said to voice what the vice mayor said. There are other committees that you also don't see, and I thank the mayor for the years of serving together on the Fire Subcommittee, which is our number-one duty, is keeping people safe on that and negotiating with Central County Fire. So, thank you for that. And the other skill that we're going to miss with the mayor leaving is she does know real estate and has served on many ad hoc committees and subcommittees dealing with sometimes companies that we may not be as overly happy with, Antin Apartments, but also in bringing the Gateway Project forward on that. So, we will definitely miss those skills. We know you'll still be around, but thank you for all of that. And one of the hidden secrets you may not know about Councilman Oliver is he and I, I was a pleasure to serve with him on the Infrastructure Committee. For you guys, that means sewer and water, probably the number-one issue that most people complain about, but I have really appreciated Councilman Oliver, Mayor Oliver on that. He is our numbers guy. So, Councilwoman-elect Cahalan and Councilman-elect Goodman, we have shoes to fill here because I can always count on Councilman Oliver having read through every single one of the budget documents, sometimes all, several hundred pages of them, and finding the things that need corrections. So, with that, it has been a pleasure serving with you both, and good luck in the future, and, golly, all that new time you will have. And again, it's also a pleasure meeting Amy and the little one, and hopefully you will be with us many more years. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Ruben, I want to thank you, I mean, we were just set that, but I want to thank you, not just you, but and your entire family for generations of dedicated public service, and that's no easy task, and that's dedication, that it's being there, because leadership, half the battle is to be there, and you've done that, your entire family have done that for decades, and I wanted to make sure that we thank you for that. I have the privilege of serving on a Technology Subcommittee together with you, and I can say for sure, throughout the last nine years, Millbrae has benefited from your steady hand, particularly during some challenging time, and we've had some of those in the last few years. I will always remember your leadership in guiding our city on how to build consensus with our Teamsters and who dedicated themselves to work for our people day in and day out on things big and small. During your leadership on the Park and Racks Commissions and the subcommittees, we've successfully received over $2 million of state and county funding, thank you Supervisor Pine for that effort as well, and to help rebuild our RAC Center, to rebuild our community, and lead to a very successful reopening of our Recreation Center earlier this year. And as our work continued around technology, you were the first to push for the in-person and hybrid council meeting, that your work has enabled more civic engagement throughout our community, and members of our community, especially our seniors, are now able to participate without leaving the comfort of their own home. And so, another excellent quality that I've always noticed over the years is that your comments are always short and sweet, and to the point. And so, you're one of those leaders who are always courageous to do what's right, but not what's easy, and always put good policies ahead of politics, and that's very admirable. So, as your term ends tonight, I hope you are only taking a sabbatical, and I look forward to have more opportunity to work with you, hopefully in a couple of short years. Thank you, Ruben. And, Madam Mayor, first of all, I wanted to congratulate our mayor, Annie Oliva, for an outstanding and stellar career in public service. It is a distinctive high honor of my own and such a privilege to even have a chance to work with you. Dating back in 2017, when you and the council appointed me to our planning commission, I was very grateful to have such an opportunity to serve, and many witnesses are in the audience tonight on that meeting. And throughout the years, you continue to lead our city and provide advice on how to be an effective leader in our community. It has been your steadfast leadership that shaped our city to come out of this global pandemic stronger than as we came into it. Throughout your time serving as vice mayor and mayor in our city, it's on pace to return to our fiscal strength, and you also championed for and lead our voters to pass our ballot measure in earlier this year, and that will help and build greater financial strength to our city. And that could be done without costing any of our city's residents a single dime, and that's wonderful. I have the privilege to serve in the Homelessness Subcommittee with you since 2021, and you led the charge, along with the help of Supervisor Pine's office, in bringing over $150,000 of the county funding to provide a much-needed assistance and the outreach to the unhoused population here in Millbrae, and have successfully addressed our homeless issue head-on, and you've been instrumental in bringing life moves to kickstart our homeless rapid response and outreach program, in alleviating the effect of homelessness has on our community. And your work never stopped, even just today, as you just mentioned a little earlier, you just helped secure another round of funding from the county, again, thank you Supervisor Pine, another $370,000 to continue to enhance this robust program through your effort, you know, between housing and shelter services, mental health assistance, and substance abuse rehabilitations. Only Lord knows how many lives and how many family you have saved. And as you leave behind a long legacy of great work, we will continue where you started, and I sincerely hope that there'll be another chapter of public service in the years ahead, right here with all of us. It's been a privilege to work with you. On behalf of a grateful city, we owe you a great deal of gratitude for all the leadership and great work you have done over the last decade. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you all, you guys, for your kind words for both of us. Very, very nice to hear. We do have a speaker slip. We have-
Mayor, if I may, just on behalf of myself and staff, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Oliver, for the great teamwork, many, many hours in the office of brainstorming ideas that haven't even been said tonight. The dog park over at TOD2 was a significant change that's going to benefit not only those residents, but the Millbrae community, and I won't miss it, and I thank you, and thank you for the dignity and respect that you always treat staff. That is so meaningful to our staff that works so very hard, and my hat's off to all the accomplishments, your leadership, and we built a great team, and there's just not enough for us to say thank you. And Millbrae is a better place because of you two, so thank you very much.
That's very sweet. We have a speaker slip. I'm going to do the speaker slip first.
You're going to end up with more.
Marge Colopietro. Marge, there she is. Yeah, we'll go next. Can't see through the-
There you go.
Point set up. There you go. Good evening, Mayor Oliva and former mayor Ruben Oliver. These past eight years of your sworn service have been challenging yet very productive. During those times, you held up to your oaths of office and the City of Millbrae protocols as best as you could. Thank you for the service you have provided to our community. You worked hundreds of hours for all of us, and I'm very certain you had more than your shares of family sacrifices. Annie, Ruben, I and your constituents are proud of you. We commend you and salute you. You will be missed and always welcome. The November elections allowed us to have, as newly-elected council members, Maurice Goodman and Angelina Cahalan. Within minutes, they will take their oaths of office and will complete Millbrae's City Council. Maurice, Angelina, during your preparation, I am hopeful you have studied your oaths of office and Millbrae protocols. The vast majority of we, the people, are hoping that you, Maurice and Angelina, have paid very special attention to your first official duty, that of casting your votes for our 2023 mayor and vice mayor. The protocols outline a clear line of succession, quote-
Mayor, I, this is an item that's on the agenda, so I'd like to, perhaps our city attorney-
Yeah, former mayor-
Since this is an item on the agenda.
Can you come back when we, when we get to that portion? You can finish it?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So, I'll hold that time at 59 seconds remaining.
Thank you, Marge. Okay, so, we're going to go to our dignitaries' presentation. We have, do we have Sarah Trejo here from Congresswoman Spear's office? There we go, she's still here.
Making sure I don't drop these and break them. They're a bit heavy. Okay. Oops. Okay, good evening, everyone. I am Sarah Trejo from the Office of Congresswoman Jackie Spear, and I am here to present a congressional record, one for Mayor Oliver and one for Councilmember Oliver. We'll do this one first. Okay, so, this is what it looks like.
This one I got on the floor?
No.
No?
No, we don't- I'll-
She's not the mayor yet.
Yes, of course, sorry, this one is yours. So, I would just like to read out the last paragraph from each. The Congresswoman is very thankful for your service, she is very proud of all of the work that you've done for the city, and she hopes that you will continue to enjoy your time with your family. For Councilmember Oliver, Ruben Oliver can be confident that he, his quiet and effective leadership was crucial to building a bright future for the city he loves. I wish him, his wife Amy, and his son Nolan, all the best in the years ahead. Ruben Oliver, the 25-year-old who wanted to serve, has done a wonderful job for his city and his neighbors. He's now earned the ultimate badge towards the rank of Eagle Scout, civic duty. Democracy in Millbrae is better due to his time on the council. And for Mayor Oliver, sorry, it is now time to say farewell to Ann, but thankfully, she isn't moving away. Her ever-present smile and can-do attitude will be evident in her community, and her willingness to volunteer will endure. When local businesses seek an advocate, they will always have Ann as an ally. Importantly, she will continue to work her magic in the real estate market, providing housing for those who seek the American dream and fair returns to the owners. The wind and fog that occasionally sweep through Millbrae will continue to have their rival in Ann's energy, and the optimism about the future that she exudes will be remembered as a major force for good during the nine years that she served Millbrae, the community she loves. Thank you.
Wait, wait.
Mayor, Councilmember-
Before you come back up-
Mayor, Council, I would stay there, we have-
Yeah. Yeah, so, do we have the representative from Senator Becker's office here yet? No, we don't? Okay, then we're going to our most honorable Supervisor Dave Pine to present commendations to both Mayor Oliva and Councilmember Oliver.
It's my pleasure to join you this evening and to extend my thanks to Councilmembers Oliva and Oliver for their many years of service to the City of Millbrae. I wish they had the opportunity to serve four more years, but you have this very stingy term limit of eight years, which perhaps is such subject to discussion at another time. Good, well, I'm glad it was a little bit longer than eight. So, as we've heard, Millbrae's dealt with a lot of issues during your tenure, from the BART development, the RAC Center, dealing with the high-speed rail, serving the homeless, facilitating biotech, and so many more issues, and you've just ably guided this city through these issues, and have done really terrific work. Ruben, you know, you're definitely wise and mature beyond your years. Every time I pick up the San Mateo Daily Journal and I read a quote from Ruben, I say to myself, well, that guy really has it together. And Annie, your work on the homeless issue has really been second to none. You know, you understand more than anyone that we can't solve homelessness by criminalizing it, that we have to extend a helping hand, and your work on this and passion for this issue has really just been a really inspiration to me, and so, I thank you for that. So, I know both of you will continue to be involved in the city and look forward to staying in touch in the years ahead. Thank you, and I do have, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, some resolutions. Ruben and Annie.
Thank you. You know, we could not achieve what we've achieved in this last year in Millbrae without a great representative in our Board of Supervisors. Dave has been worth a million to this, Dave has been worth more than anybody together on the Supervisors for the City of Millbrae, and I say that bottom line, he's a phone call away and he's an act of love. He has come through 150% for us. Thank you, Dave. Do we have a representative from Supervisor Horsley's office that I have down here? Lena Silberman? Did you want to say something? Okay, all right, we got to roll it along. One more call for Senator Becker's representative, and I'm sure they, I mean, they have so many of these different ones to hit tonight. of these different ones to hit tonight, so we might come back to that, but now we get to the good stuff. The gifts from your colleagues, actually, the City of Millbrae. So I get to go first here. Mayor Oliva?
Uh-oh.
We have a key to the city.
Oh, that's so cool.
Try using this on a door and tell me if it works.
That's a key I won't lose.
That's a key.
I love it.
Congratulations.
That's so cool. That's so cool.
Okay, next, wait, we're going to get, we go through the mayors first? Councilmember Fung has a presentation.
And Madam Mayor, this is also another gift. This is the American flag that flown in front of the City Hall, and now we wanted you to have it so that you know you always have, we always have you in our hearts.
That is so cool.
And I'm sure we're always in your heart as well.
I always wanted one of those.
That is so cool.
The other way.
I want to look at it.
You can look at it later.
I love this, guys. Thank you so much.
And one more, Councilwoman Schneider.
I love this.
Always, you know, during the COVID years, there weren't, it was a whole different way of running meetings, but we have this new tradition, not that Annie used this very often, but now you can gavel your husband and the kids. Here you go, congratulations. Thanks, guys. Thank you so much.
Okay, now, we also have gifts for Councilmember Holliver. Guess what? Another key.
There you go.
This is great because I.
That's not a TV for no one there.
You know, I returned my keys to City Hall earlier today.
That's it.
I didn't want to be asked to come back and give them back after I was kicked out.
Okay, Councilmember Fung, you got another gift there?
No, actually.
Hey, we're missing one.
I think it's the retiring and then the mayor's.
I'm following the script here.
These are just a tradition that the city started a couple of years ago. Made signs for Ruben Holliver, Ruben Holliver Way, two thousand and thirteen to twenty-twenty-two. Anyway, the boulevard, twenty thirteen, twenty twenty-two, Way Boulevard.
That is so cool.
A couple of bottles of champagne from all the staff and a card for outgoing here, Holliver and, uh, Mayor Oliva, so.
Thank you so much.
Great. Yeah, okay.
Let's get in there.
Okay, we're going to get in there for one more photo.
Are we running the show now?
Well, we're going to have to ask you to leave in there.
Do you want the champagne bottle in it?
Come on, guys. We got a lot of people out there.
Yeah.
All good.
Okay. All right, uh, now, can we give everybody our Mayor Oliva and Councilmember Holliver a big round of applause? Now, if you'll please take a seat elsewhere.
I'll help him with the gifts.
Uh, I'll leave this right here.
Okay. Sorry, it's going to take one side. There's a box there. Behind you. Okay, at this point in time, I would like to bring up our newly elected council members. It's my pleasure to introduce District Four Councilmember Maurice Goodman. Please. Sorry, we're shifting around here. Got your camera crew ready? We have someone, if you could walk to the podium there, Mr. Goodman? With your family, everybody you need. Please. And would you like to introduce the person who's going to give you the oath of office?
All right, there we go. Uh, yes, this is my son Dupre Goodman, Officer Dupre Goodman. He told me he only has a couple more minutes before he has to leave to get back to his shift, so. Oh, thank you.
I don't have the mic closer. I'm going to turn it on.
Be the emcee. All right. Congrats, Pops. Uh, you've been a big inspiration to me, I think, our whole family and our community. You've been serving since I was a kid, whether it was at South City or the school board or, you know, just all your other, um, things that you've done in your life. So I appreciate that. It's inspired me to want to serve my community and my country, so thank you for that. I'm going to keep it short and sweet because, you know, I got to go back to work in a bit, so. All right, right hand? All right, repeat after me.
Hi, Maurice Dupre Goodman.
Hi, Maurice Dupre Goodman.
Sorry.
Hi, Maurice Dupre Goodman.
I, Maurice Dupre Goodman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United
States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear. Constitution of the United States. The Constitu- There we go. And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California. And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and of the State of California. All right, that I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Councilmember Goodman, will you please join me at the dais? Take a seat. And now I'd like to introduce, we have our next, there she is, thank you very much. Councilmember-elect Angelina Cahalan. And could you please introduce the person giving you the oath of office?
Yes, this is my mom, May Barisoni.
On behalf of the Barisoni and Cahalan family, she is so kind of a person.
Thank you. Thank you. I, Angelina Cahalan. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the State of California. And that I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge. The duties in which I am about to enter. Thanks.
Councilmember Cahalan, would you please join us at the dais? Thank you. Welcome. Councilmember Goodman, Councilwoman Cahalan. If you would like just a minute or two to thank your families and anyone, if you'd like to make a statement, please, it says, we're not, hopefully speeches will be at some other time, but, um, thank you. Go right ahead. Councilman Goodman.
Good evening, every, good evening, everyone. First, I give an honor to God. I would like to ask that you all join me in a brief moment of silence for those who are no longer here with us, those whose shoulder that we stand on. I want to acknowledge my mother, Bertha Lee Goodman, my grandmother, Creola Ford, my brothers Benjamin and Johnny, and last but not least, the memory and the life of a young man whose life was taken way too soon, Chinadu Okobi. Thank you. Thank you all for joining us here tonight, and to our outgoing members, uh, Councilmembers Oliva and Holliver, thank you for your years of service, and that deserves a round of applause for them. Thank you. Congratulations, Angelina. I look forward to working alongside you and our new council colleagues to bring compassion, hope, and our wonderful, uh, and hope to our wonderful city. To Bob Nguyen and Wayne Lee, thank you for running a competitive campaign. As I said before, we were never running against each other, rather, we ran for our city and her residents, who are the winners here, and we are just stewards, given the honor to serve. To my supporters, I want to thank you all for your calls, conversations at Starbucks twice a week, your donations, and for welcoming, welcoming me to this great community. I personally want to thank Peninsula Young Democrats, Amy and Michael Kelly, our newly-elected Sheriff Christina Corpus, and Senator Josh Becker. Now to my family and friends, y'all know me way too much and well, sorry. You have poured into me for as long as I can remember. Thank you. To my wife and kids, thank you for allowing me to give myself to our community for the past twenty years, as I have served our community organizations, supported families and children, served as a volunteer for the Red Cross, school board, the NAACP, and most recently, the college board, and my day job, my op, with my Operation Genesis family. Your support and love cannot be overlooked. Thank you, and I love you.
Beautiful. Councilwoman Cahalan.
Thank you. I would like to begin with gratitude. Thank you to all the family and friends who have supported me throughout this process. Special thanks to my family for coming down here from out of town, and my aunts and uncles, and dear family friends, um, for being here. To Stephen and my boys, um, I appreciate you believing me and supporting me on this new venture. My family has grounded me these last few months and will continue to do so in the years ahead. I'm incredibly grateful to my volunteer team. There's no way I could have run, let alone won this race, without all of you. Every action, big and small, has made a difference. I hope you all feel and know the impact that you make in our community, and I hope other people who do not have large donors or political connections feel inspired to run for office. To my opponent, Wayne, thank you for a positive campaign and for your support as I learn the intricacies of city council business. As you all know, this has been a historical election. It was the first, it was the first district election in Millbrae, and I'm also the first person on our council to live and specifically represent the east side of El Camino. As I met with neighbors, I heard loud and clear that the east side residents often feel left out and forgotten. I assure everyone in District Two that my seat at the table is yours. I am here to represent you and all of the residents of Millbrae. My favorite part of the elections was getting to know so many of my neighbors and all the great organizations in Millbrae. I look forward to getting to know even more residents across our city, building relationships, and collaborating with all our city's amazing community groups. My values throughout my campaign and in my life and throughout my term focus on community, service, inclusion, justice, personalism, and heart. We have a wonderful city made up of incredible people, and I think we're in a moment in time where we have a great council, city committees, our commissioners, um, and incredible city staff in place to address the issues our community is calling for. I'm honored to join this council and look forward to the work that we have together, being true representatives of the people and making Millbrae an even better and brighter city for all of us.
Well, welcome. Time to get to work. I am opening the nominations to declare the office of mayor.
Madam Vice Mayor, might I make a comment?
Councilmember Fung.
I'd like to make a motion to implement the protocol as stated in the memo dated December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, and that the rotation protocol spells out Vice Mayor Gina Papin to become our next mayor, and also, also Councilmember Andrews Fung and myself to be the next vice mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion, and I will second the motion. Do we have any discussion at this point? Okay, we're going to. Excuse me, what, just, Mr. Kelly, just a minute. We have council discussions first. Council comments? Seeing none, we have two speaker slips. Former Mayor Colopietro was speaking, so we can give her another minute or so.
Maurice, Angelina, during your
During your preparation, I'm hopeful you have studied your oaths of office and Millbrae's protocols. The vast majority of we the people are hoping that you Maurice and you Angelina have paid very special attention to your first official duty, that of casting your votes for our 2023 mayor and vice mayor. The protocols outline a clear line of succession, quote, "shall be responsible, orderly, and peaceful to enable our council to work in a collaborative manner," close quote. Please do not take the protocols lightly. Congratulations, welcome, and thank you one and all.
Thank you. The next speaker slip is Michael Kelly.
Can we get a budget for new technology in here? That'll be great. Hello again, everybody, and welcome to our new council members. Again, my name is Michael Kelly. Because I didn't hear it earlier, I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. We're all gathered here on unceded land of the Remaitush Aloni. I think it'd be great if we could start acknowledging at all council meetings and city business. This is unceded land, and we just happen to be on it right now. The next point I'd like to share is that I have a name badge on, and I'm really proud of this because I was one of the inaugural members of the Citizens Academy of Millbrae. I graduated with about 15 others. I see Santana, I see Joe Torisi, I see Angelina Cahalan. We were all in that first class of learning about how the city runs and its departments and its responsibilities. And I'm very proud of this. It's a piece of paper and a little piece of plastic, and it's worth so much to me. That way also people can see who I am if you forget my name. But I'm up here today because part of what I learned in that process of getting certified as a Citizens Academy graduate and going through the ceremony was how the process in the city works. And part of that is, yes, protocols. And part of it also is bringing in the elements around elections have consequences, and the majority of the people elected a majority council seating that has huge tasks in front of it. The climate challenge, to put it mildly, we're facing, the environment, flooding that's gone in Millbrae for so long and now has become lethal, the kinds of skill sets needed to address that from a leadership perspective. Councilmember Ann Schneider has decades of experience in dealing with environment and recycling and the things that affect climate change. It's really important that qualified people come and lead our city. Councilmember Goodman has decades of experience promoting education and working with law enforcement. His own son, I mean, decorated marine, San Mateo police officer, knows how to work with that part of our society, with the policing. Councilmember Cahalan brings together collaborative approach to feeding hungry people. She's worked for Meals on Wheels and St. Anthony's and these amazing institutions. And what I'm here to suggest and recommend, actually urge, the new majority of our council is to set protocol aside because it's time that we have leaders that we can trust that will keep their commitments. I would hope you'll consider Mayor Ann Schneider to be our new leader, Maurice Goodman to be our Vice Mayor, because they have what it takes to, and a proven track record, to guide us through the challenges facing us. So I hope you'll consider that nomination and vote accordingly. Thank you so much, everybody.
We have three people on Zoom.
Hi, good evening. It's my first time to second speak in this table, and I thought, like, I know Gina long time ago, long, long time ago, more than 20 years. I know, how does she have been come, contribute her value, her knowledge, her hardworking, her personal time to serve our community. Long, long time, from my heart. Thank you so much. Anders Fung, as of, of course, as she, like, everybody, have 53% of Asian in the board. Now, she's the only one Asian member in the board. I believe she knowing our needs, she had been very successful for her personal career, also her family. We have a very nice family, as a good model in the communities. And in the past years, she had been served in the board member, I know. He had been tried so hard. Even she can using those value only for her family, for his business, I think will be a big difference for his personal career. But he'd like to commit his personal time, valuable time, knowledge, and his best personal characters and to find for Millbrae's benefits. And she's been worked so well in the board and donate his value for effort and effort for the community. I please and welcome the two councilperson and understanding as the former saying, like, please have your first words and be a good supporting of Millbrae's protocol. Thank you.
And we have three people on Zoom.
Alan Wong.
Yes, good evening, everybody. A big thank you for Merrill Leva and Commissioner Ruben Holliver for your dedicated service to our city, your time, your energies, your leadership. Because of your contributions, I'm very proud to call Millbrae my home. And congratulations to Angelina and Maurice. I wish you success, and I look forward to meeting with you and sharing your visions for Millbrae and how we can make that become reality. For the Millbrae mayor rotation, I would like to support Gina Pappin and for mayor, and Anders Fung for Vice Mayor. I have found both to be transparent, honest, concerned for all Millbrae residents. What they say in public is what they say in private. The passion, the viewpoints, the openness that they show in public meetings is the same passion that they share every time I encounter them around town. They have tremendous leadership, integrity, and are both great role models for our community. I would especially like to support Anders for Vice Mayor. Anders has a big heart for our Asian community, and his elevation to Vice Mayor is needed to reflect the composition of our community. Discrimination can be very subtle, and more so against Asian Americans. An Asian family could have roots in America that go back century, but they are still seen as outsiders. They can still be marginalized. They can be seen as Asians first and not Americans first. With over 60% Asian Americans in our community, but only comprising 20% of the city council, I urge the council to express justice, fairness, and not perpetuate, but shatter the glass ceiling for Asians by nominating Anders for Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Next.
Ali Saferman.
Hi, my name's Ali Saferman. I am calling in support of the motion that's on the floor. It is extremely valuable that we are following protocol. I am calling after spending three full meetings, both, all three of them going past midnight in San Mateo because they did not follow protocol. And the protocol set forth to elect people in rotation for mayor and vice mayor. It was extremely disruptive to the city. It completely halted all of the important work that the city does, the data databases. And beyond that, it wastes a lot of staff time, but created a lot of distrust in the city. I would hate to see that also happen to Millbrae. I would like to see Millbrae do better tonight and follow the rotation, follow the protocol. It is their turn to be mayor and vice mayor, and we really look forward to having them serve. Thank you.
Thank you. One more Zoom speaker.
Ryan Motashemi.
Great. Good evening, Millbrae City Council. My name is Ryan Motashemi, speaking on my own behalf tonight, and I'm also a member of Peninsula Young Dems. I also am calling in to support the motion. Councilmember Pappin, I just wanted to say I believe you are an exceptional leader, and you sit on many regional bodies such as the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And I really, as an active transportation advocate, appreciate the work that you've done calling on Caltrans to improve safety on El Camino Real through Millbrae, and that's just an incredible issue that's of importance to me. And I appreciate that you do that. I believe that you have the experience to lead and based on the protocols to become mayor of Millbrae. And I support the nomination of you as mayor and hope that the council agrees. Councilmember Fung, I support the nomination for you as Vice Mayor and do hope that the council agrees as well. I appreciate the interest that you have in reaching out to transit advocates and others to get their ideas and opinions on matters. I appreciate that you stick up for those in the API community, and I appreciate your willingness to do what can be politically difficult. And so I, and again, I support your nomination as Vice Mayor. So again, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Pappin and Councilmember Fung, for your service to the city of Millbrae and for your work otherwise as well. And I support the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two more speaker slips, and then, so doesn't, okay, Wayne Lee. Then we'll close the public hearing, followed by Evan Adams.
I'm not going to reiterate what Alan Wong said, but it's true. The city is starting to get divided, and we need to bring the city together. And this means representation for everybody. This city, like it or not, is 40 to 50% Asian, and they only have one Asian member, and then now they're saying, oh, let's skip this Asian council member because I want to be mayor. You all have a responsibility to make this city whole, to keep it whole. But right now, if you do that, you're going to divide the city because it's already, the Asians already feel marginalized, especially after this election, I hate to say. There was a lot of racism that went around. I wasn't going to say it, but there was a lot of racism. And I didn't say anything because I was the candidate, but nobody stood up for that. Nobody. So you want to, if you want to split the city, you follow the protocol and be civil about it, or you split the city. That's up to you. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, and if everybody could please just give people an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Hi there, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm speaking tonight on my own behalf. I'm from a city that doesn't have a rotation. And we skipped our rotation about 10, 12 years ago, and we are only now beginning to heal from it. It creates long divisions in the city. It creates massive problems. It splits people. And you get a back and forth. And I'm just encouraging you, you want to avoid that. You saw the beginnings of that in San Mateo recently. Thank God we won't be here till 3:00 a.m. like in San Mateo. But in my city, in Foster City, it was extremely harmful to our community to start messing with rotations. You have a wonderful document here. Great thing about government documents and government procedures, they're not copyrighted. I plan on stealing this and bringing it to my city. So please keep, please keep to your schedule. If you want to revisit it and revisit your procedures in the future, you can do that. And then, even better, you can codify it in law. Thanks so much, and good luck tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Mr. Councilwoman Schneider.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Typically, we do the mayor and then the vice mayor, but you made a motion combined. Are you keeping the motion combined? That's not how we normally do things. That's question one.
Question one, I guess, legal counsel.
I don't think that there is a law that would preclude it. It's really a matter of policy, and however the council would like to approach this is fine. You're right. Traditionally, we've done it one at a time, but it.
It can go either way.
It could go either way.
Okay, second question. Since there has been talk of protocol, before I was elected, protocol was not followed. When I was elected in my third year, protocol was not followed. My fourth year, protocol was not followed.
Quiet, please.
And I actually agree with the candidate from Foster City. I do believe that protocol should go to the voters, and I think we have the opportunity in the next year. But even within the protocol for tonight, Councilwoman, or Vice Mayor Pappin was the number one vote getter in the 2020 election. I was the second vote getter, and Councilman Fung was the third vote getter on that and defeating another young Asian man by 33 votes on that. So protocols are sadly in Millbrae at the whim of the city council. I have been subjected to that. And it is not fair for anyone. And we all watch San Mateo, and I am glad that Amaranth Lee was made mayor. And I think I've heard who's been appointed to that, but it is painful for every city. But elections do have consequences, and to claim protocol now but not to claim protocol in the past is just not being honest. So with that, I would call the question.
Called for the question. That means the vote.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Yes, I believe that the motion is to nominate Councilmember Pappin, or Vice Mayor Pappin, as the mayor and to nominate Councilmember Fung as the Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Schneider.
Nay.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin.
Aye.
The motion for Vice Mayor Gina Pappin for the office of mayor and Anders Fung for office of Vice Mayor fails by a vote of 2-2-3. Three, two, sorry. Excuse me.
Okay, all right. I'd like to make a clarification for the record here.
I think the public couldn't hear. Assistant City Clerk.
Can you guys? The motion for Vice Mayor Pappin for the office of mayor and Councilmember Fung for the office of Vice Mayor failed by a vote of 3-2.
Okay, all right. So can we clarify for the record the staff recommendation? Can you state and what the protocol was? Just for public record.
Yeah, refer to the city attorney for the protocols.
I believe that there was a report given to the city.
I don't think you're, is your mic on?
Yeah, I hope so. So there was a report issued to the city council and the incumbent city council members on December 6, which outlined the entire rotation policy and our protocols and concluded with showing what that rotation would yield.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I don't, someone's waving. I don't, I'm not sure if they can hear in the back. No, I'm saying they can't hear.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, in the back.
Okay. So I was just repeating that there was a report issued, as is required by the protocols every year, to advise the council and, in this case, the incoming council members, what the protocol rotation would yield. And this December 6 memorandum that went out concluded that based on the protocol, the protocol would have called for Vice Mayor to Mayor, that would be Gina Pappin, and that the 2020 election outcome would have brought. and that the 2020 election outcome would have brought Councilmember Andrew Fung to the vice mayor. So, that's the, that's the order. And then, the next, in the lineup, putting in the lineup the new council members would be Maurice, Councilmember Goodman, would follow in the lineup based on the number of votes, which is the manner in which this protocol would place people in the lineup. And then, after Councilman Goodman, we would have Councilwoman Cahalan.
Okay, and there was also a note as to why?
And there is a note here that pursuant to the protocols, they have traditionally said that no one person serves as mayor in one-four-year term.
Okay, and so, the reason for the current staff recommendation is that we also went out of the protocol when I nominated Councilwoman Schneider to become the mayor in her first part of this term. So, the protocol was adjusted, and the majority of the council all voted Councilwoman Schneider in. She served one time as mayor here in this four-year cycle. So, under our current protocol, it is established that you can serve as mayor one time in your four-year term. So, that is why the staff recommendation is as presented. Councilwoman Schneider has served as mayor at the very beginning of her four-year term. Councilwoman Schneider?
I have hated this meeting for the last five years. That is because with your lead and the council, you passed over me twice. So, I had to run for a second election to get to serve as mayor, also not according to protocol. So, again, protocol, within the document that the city manager sent to all of us, including the council members-elect, it does state that protocols are at the whim of the council. And what that means is at the whim of the majority council.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes. City Attorney, a couple of questions for clarification. Was that memo a staff recommendation?
No, I would not call this a staff recommendation.
Okay.
This was-
That's all.
An interpretation-
Right, thank you. Secondly, does a protocol take into account district elections, the current as it's stated?
I don't think the protocol contemplated district elections.
Right, okay. And then, lastly, as it was just stated, does a protocol allow for decisions to be made at the pleasure of the majority of the board?
Majority of the council? Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Ann Schneider as mayor.
Madam Vice Mayor, can I make comments?
Yes.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Okay.
There is a second.
Can I make my comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Fung?
Yeah, so, here's my take on protocol in general. A protocol is a set of rules that is a product of our democracy. In many different versions of this council body, these, protocol has been discussed, debated upon, and eventually agreed and voted upon. It is a part of our democracy. It may not have been codified, but it is a part of our democracy. So, not respecting the protocol is no different than not respecting our own democracy, number one. And for that very same reason, back in 2020, when I sworn in as a council member, first got elected, recognizing some of the previous challenges regarding rotation, my first official action and my first official vote that I have casted is to vote for Councilmember Schneider to become mayor despite differences of opinion among ourselves. And the reason for doing so is to bring the community together, is to respect our protocol in ways as, just as we respect our own democracy. Because our job, after the election is over, is to work together and bring community together. And part of it is to honor our own tradition. And this protocol has been our tradition for many, many years. Now, you know, we can debate all day long as to why some of the previous years, some part of the protocol may not have been followed. But one thing for sure is that ever since, sort of use the term right the ship since 2020, as we start following protocol again, things have gotten a lot better in the city, and healing process begin to take place. And we get to focus on people's business, focus on the importance of our people's lives every day, instead of debating who gets the gavel. And the same goal that I had two years ago is the same goal that I have tonight for the goodness of our 23,000 people in our city. That's why I implore all of you to understand the reason for following that protocol, so that we can focus on the people's business and doing what's important, which is in front of us, our constituency, our 23,000 folks who lives in our beautiful city. That should be the focus.
I would also like to state further. Councilmember Goodman, you mentioned district elections. A lot of cities are approaching district elections. And I do think, as we enter the district elections, we need to reevaluate our protocols because it's going to be very different in every single district, the number of votes received. And I think we should just reestablish them in a way that the districts, when they open up, are such that everybody has an opportunity. I think some people have just rotated the mayor's ship throughout. So, I do think that that's important moving forward here. I do think that, as you noted, I was the largest vote getter in this last election. And as a courtesy to Councilwoman Schneider, I was the one who nominated her in the first cycle here. I don't think that it's appropriate now that I lose my rank in the protocol. It's out of fairness that we have the protocol that you serve as mayor once in a four-year term. And so, I am hoping that this council will unite and not just, I think it will be divisive to reorder the position of mayor at this point in time. We have a lot of important business ahead that we are hopefully going to bring people together on. But I do believe, and I hope you would reconsider your motion at this point because I just, it really takes everything out of order here. So, I would ask, out of respect, that when we move forward, that you reconsider your motion so that we can at least take this in order. And as I said, we're going to have to work through what we do with district elections and change it up out of fairness, but I don't think this current motion is fair. So, I respectfully ask if you would reconsider.
Yes, my response to that would be, what actions are needed to change a protocol? That the majority of council?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And we approved district elections. There was no recommendation to change the protocol.
Not at that time, no.
Right, and we didn't think to change protocol to take out the portion where it allows for the majority of a board or of a council to choose whomever they thought would like to serve. And so, what I would really like to say is, we've all taken the oath to serve.
Yes, sir.
And so, are you saying, or are you, Councilmember Fung, saying that if this does not go your way, you're going to take your toys and go to another sandbox? Or are you going to say, "Hey, I took an oath to serve this great city, and I will serve this city"?
Not what I'm suggesting, sir.
Well, but that's what I'm hearing when we're saying it's going to be divisive. Decisions are made, there's going to be winners and losers, not just tonight, but for many meetings to come. And it should be the majority of the board, of the council, I keep saying board. The majority of the council, that we all lock arms after that decision is made, just like it was said earlier by Wayne, that you might not agree. Go have a beer, do whatever, or whatever libation of your choice, and you agree to disagree, and you move forward as a council for the betterment of the city.
What I would like to say, what I, what I would like to suggest, and it was a request.
Yeah, I will, I'm not going to-
Again.
Thank you.
The request is that when we move forward here, we should reevaluate, given the implementation of district elections. A lot of cities are doing that, where things change.
And I agree with that, and I think with the mayor-
May I finish just please, please?
Yeah.
I would like to suggest that, as we move forward here, as many cities are doing, yes, we went to district elections, and yes, we are in the position that a lot of cities are in, where after the first round of district elections, they modify their protocols so that each district then has an opportunity here. I was elected citywide, and that really, the vast majority of the residents here elected me. And I would hope that, as we move in this direction here, that we don't throw the protocol aside at this point in time. Yes, I agree, we need to redo it, as many cities are doing right now. But it is such that I do think your motion would be disruptive. Yes, we've all taken an oath. I agree with that. But it's disheartening to think that all the protocols are being thrown out because we have two new members here, and that this just completely disregards every protocol that we have. And, you know, I hate to see that happen. Yes, sir.
I was just saying, it seems the only protocol you're okay with throwing out is the portion of the protocol that allows for the majority of the council to make a decision.
Well, I'm trying to address that. We know. We can count to three, that's the decision.
But that's a part of the protocol that you're saying isn't being followed. That's a part, you can't pick and choose what aspect of the protocol.
Well, the protocols that we had are set up. What I'm saying is, everyone except the vote is being thrown out, yes. Every single one. The rotation, the fact that we have a protocol that you only serve once in a four-year term. So, I mean, standard voting exists no matter what. I wouldn't even consider that a protocol. That's just the way business is done. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to call the question if there aren't any comments.
I do have a comment, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes.
And just to acknowledge, Councilmember Goodman, what you said a little earlier with regard to district election not being considered when the original protocol was established because at that time, district election was not in place yet. So, and district election is one of those things that we phase in. First is two districts to be established, or five districts to be established, but two of them up for election, and then another election cycle will phase in the rest of the three council members who are currently elected at large, but in two years will be elected by district. And let me finish, and then I'll be sure to give you an opportunity to respond. So, therefore, as part of these changes, recognizing these changes are forthcoming, I do believe that the protocol needs to be modified and phased in the same way how district election are being phased into our council and among many other jurisdictions as well. So, I do believe, and I do agree in general, that the protocol will need to be discussed upon and taken into account of the upcoming district elections. But to the extent that the protocol applies to the current council members and those at least who are elected at large, that this protocol applies too. Following the protocol is our way to, like I said again a little earlier, respect the decision that we have been making, we have made long ago and the same tradition that we have followed for many times. Another thing that I wanted to respond and bring to light is that the purpose of this is to have a clear line of succession and a peaceful transfer of responsibility and power. And that has always been tradition of our country as well.
Now, please, please.
I do understand that election has consequences, and the consequences should be the betterment of our community. That's where the consequence should be. That's what election is for. And so, to that end, I would respectfully, you know, ask that you reconsider your motion because I do believe that would be disruptive. And, you know, we're here to serve 23,000 people in this city, and that's what this protocol allows us to do. None of us here is to serve ourselves. We're here to serve the people in front of us.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say one other thing here, if I may. And I don't think the people that voted in this last district election ever contemplated that the new members would disregard the established protocols. I don't, please, please, please. I, I know people in each and every of the districts here, but I don't, I can't believe that they would be comfortable with the new members that they've elected here, thinking that the protocols would be completely disregarded, and the votes in the previous election, I see, disregarded in that way. So, if it's, Councilmember Cahalan, do you have any comments on this? Oh, yeah, excuse me. I understand that, and I'm asking if there's any further questions by the council.
But if I call the question, that should end debate. I mean, parliamentarian.
If there-
That if there is no comments from the public.
I'm asking the council, a new council member, if she has any comments as well. Okay, all right. Does, okay.
Just to clarify, is this only the motion for the-
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
No.
Vice Mayor Papin?
No.
The motion to elect Councilmember Schneider to the office of mayor passes by a vote of three to two. three to two.
If I could, my mother, my mother fell and broke her hip.
Point of order, Mayor.
All, I'm sorry, ma'am, you need to sit down. My mom, my, my mother fell and broke her hip, so she can't join us tonight. So I would dearly love three fabulous chairs of Millbrae Committees to join me at the podium and to please swear me in. So our cultural arts advisory chair, Amy Lauer, our former and longtime mayor, our chair of Millbrae Community Enhancement, Carol Krasilnikoff, and our new chair of Community Environmental Advisory Committee, Jean Wong, please join me at the podium.
I know we didn't, I didn't give you guys warning, but these ladies have done an amazing job for Millbrae, and it is my honor to have them with me now.
How do, how do, let me get rid of this podium. How about right here? Does this work? So if you each take a pair of sentences, okay?
I, Ann Schneider.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all, against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith.
And.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you, ladies.
Congratulations.
City ma'am? Okay. Congratulations. Okay, if the next item on the agenda is nomination and election of vice mayor, I'll take nominations.
I'd like to nominate Maurice.
We're used to having the hand raised on Zoom, and we don't have that here. Councilwoman Cahalan?
I'd like to nominate Maurice Goodman.
I second that nomination. Comments from council?
Yes. So, once again, I'd just like to comment, congratulations, Councilmember Schneider. But again, do not believe that the voters contemplated new members completely disregarding all of the established protocols, so I will be voting no, but go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I will call the question.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman? Councilmember Fung?
No.
Vice Mayor Papin?
No longer, no.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
A motion and second on the floor for Councilmember Goodman for the, for the office of Vice Mayor passes by a vote of three to two.
Acting city clerk, just because there was some clapping, could you say that once more, please, for the video?
The motion to elect Councilmember Goodman to the office of Vice Mayor passes by a vote of three to two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. You know, the issue of protocol, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
Should I ask her, she said no.
Thank you.
Will you please raise your right hand? I, Maurice Goodman.
I, Maurice Goodman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
I actually have no prepared comments, because, as I said, this night has been a painful night for many, many years. I do commit that our first action in January will be a town hall meeting to talk about various aspects of the election and to bring in comments. We've long known that with five districts, when it's the election year with three seats, there's a possibility that one district would never have the opportunity to be mayor. So we have to fix that, and we will fix it through a series of town hall meetings and then bring it to the voters. And in the future, to spare everyone, their friends and their family, it will be locked and codified, and we won't go through this protocol at the whim of the power of whoever has the majority on city council. I understand it's very painful for the, for Councilwoman Papin and Councilman Fung. Believe me, I have been there twice, and even the year that I was made mayor, I didn't know if people were going to support me, and I had to have meetings with several people to talk about what my plans had been during, during my years mayor, which then was a COVID year. And most of us, as Councilman Hollibur knows, we didn't really get done the things that we might have liked to get done because COVID, and our first responsibility, your council members, all of your elected officials, our number one responsibility is your safety. And it's, it's that every year, it's always on council goals, but I am very excited to have the vice mayor with his incredible background in, in the law and the changes that we can make to make Millbrae safer for everyone. I'm well aware that we're an Asian-majority community, and they have borne the brunt of being blamed for something they should never have been blamed for, the COVID pandemic, that we have work to do. We want everyone safe. We're also the largest elderly population in Millbrae, and a lot of crimes in the last couple of years have been against elderly, because, and I'm going to put it bluntly, you can grab a purse from them and they can't chase you, and hopefully none of us know to chase each other. So we'll, I think that that's going to be a high priority for us, and again, I am really, really looking forward to all of the skills that Vice Mayor Goodman will bring. Truth be told, I've known the vice mayor since I was a newly transferred up Red Cross volunteer. We worked the San Bruno gas explosion together, and he made me feel welcome. I was a Sierra Club volunteer, and the Sierra Club does not welcome its volunteers. In fact, quite often, they, they grind them down, but under Maurice and a couple of the other Red Cross people, it was, it was a scary thing, people died, and it was hard to deal with that. And it was six weeks, we all worked together in the YouTube building and then back in Burlingame, and it was exhausting, but I have loved you ever since because of that, because we can be a community together. I've only known Councilwoman-elect Cahalan for a short time, but she comes from the nonprofit sector. I also worked in the nonprofit sector, and one thing you learn there is money is dear, and the best way to get things done is collaboration. So I am counting on Councilwoman Cahalan to bring that lovely spirit of collaboration and the great skill set that she brings. In terms of Councilman Fung, he and I served on several committees together. I plan on maintaining the committee assignments, and he did a lovely job, and I hope he will take the leadership role on fire safety, which I hope, when it comes back to all of us, will come back as public safety on that. And Councilwoman Papin, we've had our, our times in the past. I will say that the last year has actually been quite pleasant. It has been nice to be working with Councilwoman Papin instead of the way it had been, and I hope that we can regain that. The Councilwoman Papin serves an incredible function for San Mateo County, and she has served the county and the city of Millbrae well with serving on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And we have a lot of work to do with transportation agencies that have a relationship with safety, but also have a relationship with our economic vitality and our ability to build housing. So it's going to be a big year. I, the thing that I also hope to bring is, right when I got elected to council, a lot of our committees were downgraded to advisory committees from commissions, and I would like to bring it back and to upgrade them back to commissions. We're a small city with a small staff, with a small revenue base, and the way we're going to get to be everything that we want to be is by fully engaging the public and making opportunity for the public. And I believe that this council, in the new year, we can come together and benefit from the strengths each of us has and each of us brings. With that, I, I believe we have a celebration in the Chet Cootie Room. I'm sorry? Okay, oh, oh, I'm so sorry. Comments from council, I would.
Not council.
No, it's actually comments from newly installed council members, but we, we did that, Annie had that done? Okay, so with that, I would love to say happy holidays to everyone. We are having a celebration in the Chet Cootie Room. So if you walk through City Hall, past our temporary rec center, up the stairs, the Chet Cootie Room is between the library and our historical museum. We have snacks and drinks up there, and I hope, having been on the other side, I know that tonight is painful and it's painful for the supporters, but I hope we can come together. 2023, we're still dealing with COVID. Today, the chamber told me they had to cancel their, their Christmas party, again, because flu and vaccines, or flus and COVID and the other viruses are all coming through. I wish everyone a safe and healthy holiday and a happy new year, and if you have not, because it is our role, if you have not been vaxxed or gotten your flu shot, it is not too late. Please go and get your vax. Thank you all. Good night.